We have to be official and start at 6:30. Roll call.
Harding.
Here.
Jerem.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Pauls.
Here.
Palermo.
Here.
Festerson.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. We're gonna do the pledge of allegiance. I didn't have to ask you to stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
An affidavit publication is on file and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public hearing of the 2019 City of Omaha budget. Glad to see you all here today to provide input and recommendations to our city budget. Tonight's public hearing is conducted in accordance with the requirements of the city charter. To make tonight's proceedings as efficient as possible, we will follow procedures that we have used well in the past, that have worked well in the past. I'll ask City Clerk Eliza Butler to describe the procedures for tonight's public hearing.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you. This public hearing is for the 2019 city budget. Before you enter the chamber, you were asked to sign in. The council will call you to the podium in that order. We ask that you keep your comments limited to the budget and that you speak for no more than three minutes. The light at the podium will turn yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining in your time. Please summarize your comments at that point. When the light turns red, your time has expired. If you have written out your presentation, please consider stating your name and address and submitting the presentation for council members to review later. Your written comments will then be part of the official record. Council members and other city officials are here to listen to your comments. They will not respond or debate the issues tonight. Council members welcome your calls and emails if you wish to discuss issues in greater detail.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. After the public hearing, the council's budget review process continues. Council members will consider your input as we continue to review the recommended budget. We're scheduled to vote on the budget at our regular council meeting on Tuesday, August 21st at 2:00 PM. I ask everyone to be considerate of your fellow citizens tonight by focusing your comments on the budget, staying within your allotted time, and by being respectful of views that may differ from yours. In addition, I ask that you turn off or silence any of your electronic devices. We will now commence with the first speaker, and we have a list of folks who have signed in, I presume, and so we're going to start with that. And our first speaker this evening is Gloria Osterberry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Gloria Osterberry.
You can begin.
I'm Gloria Osterberry. That's A-U-S-T-E-R-B-E-R-R-Y of Augustana Lutheran Church, a member of Omaha Together One Community, that's OTAC. My team members and I on the Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Action Team of OTAC will state our positions related to the city budget with a slideshow for illustrating our points. We appreciate the time city leaders give to this process each year and also appreciate the opportunity to give feedback in advance of the city council decisions, so thank you. This year, we will focus our testimony about the budget around the housing issues that we saw on just one block, 42nd and Maple Street, only a few blocks from Girls Inc. and Holy Name Catholic. We focus on problems on this one block, but these problems illustrate common issues that face many neighborhoods across the city. This is 4205 Maple, owner occupied, very well maintained, despite the fact that it is surrounded by some deteriorating property. The house next door was a rental property that's been vacant about two years since a minor fire was there. There's been a demolition order on the house since 2016. It looks like it could be saved with some investment. The front porch is wide open. No door is in place. Here's the living room as seen through the front window of glass. There are at least two missing windows. Well, this house could be saved, but not if it remains vacant for very much longer, vacant and open. In 2013, OTAC challenged the city council to continue the progress begun with Mayor Suttle. The goal was raising the funding for demolition to $1 million per year on a yearly basis until the city significantly reduced the number of dangerous buildings, which was then about 750 structures. You and Mayor Stothert responded to that challenge, and since 2014, the city has consistently invested about $1 million in city and federal funds for demolition. Since 2013, therefore, the city has invested almost $6 million and demolished hundreds of these dangerous structures. Some owners have gotten the message that the city is serious and themselves demolished their dangerous buildings. There are now fewer than 150 dangerous buildings waiting for demolition. We celebrate this progress.
Your time is up, Ms.
And ask you to accept Mayor Stothert's recommendation to invest $1.1 million in demolition funding for 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osterberry. Next is David McLeod. And Susan Coleman is on deck.
Good evening. My name is David McLeod, M-C capital L-E-O-D. My address is 5012 Miami Street, and I'm also on the OTAC Housing Team. OTAC worked with Habitat for Humanity, business leaders, and legislators to get the land bank authorized in the Umer Camro. And then it was created by you, the city council. The Omaha Municipal Land Bank is now bearing fruit by buying tax delinquent properties that could become abandoned properties. With the help of generous donors, the land bank wants to be part of solving the problem of abandoned buildings. The land bank has offered to provide half a million dollars annually to pay off demolition liens that the city has placed on the properties for the cost of demolishing these dangerous abandoned buildings. This will allow the city to reinvest those funds to demolish about 30 additional abandoned houses from the list in 2018-19. An interlocal agreement for the land bank to provide this funding to the city has been discussed since last year. OTAC asked the city council to adopt the final interlocal agreement by the end of August.
Thank you. Next up is Susan Coleman.
Good evening. I'm Susan Coleman, and I live at 9242 Raven Oaks Drive. I am a member of Holy Name Church and the OTAC Housing Team. So, once a dangerous property has been demolished, who takes responsibility for cutting the grass and weeds that grow where the house once was? This is a lot at 4209 Maple, on the other side of the nicely maintained home. The city demolished the house this year. It appears that the lot has not been mowed in months. The owner of the house has a tax address in Las Vegas, so he's not likely to come back and mow it. So, how long does it usually take before the city cuts the grass and weeds on a lot where the house was demolished? How tall do the weeds of grass have to grow? While weeds and grass can easily outgrow our best efforts, the land bank hires contractors, and they are much more diligent about keeping up with mowing the grass and keeping the lot in a respectable appearance. We have been surprised to learn that the city does not routinely foreclose on the demolition liens that it puts on the house for the cost of demolition. That means ownership stays with the same owner who abandoned the property in the first place. It also means the city has to keep cutting the grass and weeds, adding even more liens on the property. So here is OTAC's position. We urge the city to sign the interlocal agreement with the land bank and then begin foreclosures on all demolition liens as quickly as the law allows. Once the land bank pays off the demolition liens of the properties, the city should transfer the title to the land bank. That would allow the land bank to take responsibility for maintaining the property, relieving the taxpayers of that cost, and also reducing blight in that neighborhood. More importantly, it would allow the land bank to get that property back into productive use and back onto the tax rolls.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Next up is Deborah Mayberry Strong. Following her is Tiffany, and I hope I don't torture your last name too bad.
Locals.
Locals, okay. Deborah Mayberry Strong.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Deborah Mayberry Strong. I reside at 3515 State Street in Omaha, Nebraska. I'm a member of First United Methodist Church and also a member of the OTAC Housing Action Team. We're showing a picture now of 4202 Maple Street. It is a rent house across the street from the abandoned house that we have been discussing. Several neighbors told OTAC they were concerned about the trash that accumulated for a month after the city garbage collector stopped picking up their trash. This is what the house looked like on Saturday and Sunday of this week. But from Sunday night to this afternoon, this is a positive change. It was probably because one neighbor was calling the city, and also the tenants could not help but see strangers walking around and taking pictures of the property. But it does raise the question, under what situations can the city contractor refuse to pick up garbage? How does this get resolved so that the rest of the neighborhood does not suffer? Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany is up next, and followed by Tiffany is Dennis Walsh.
My name is Tiffany LeColst. That's L-E-C-O-L-S-T, and I live at 5027 Emmett Street. I too am a member of OTAC Housing Action Team, and I also work for a nonprofit organization currently that I do housing inspections for homeless individuals and families who are transitioning into housing. I do weekly proactive inspections to make sure the unit is up to code before the tenant is able to move in. With doing these weekly inspections on rental properties throughout the Omaha metro area, as you can imagine, I see the good and I also see the bad. One of the few things that I see with doing these inspections is things like bedrooms that are trying to be converted in the basement without an egress window, no smoke alarms. I also see no proper ventilations. These are just to name a few. When landlords know and understand the standards that are set forth and that are supposed to be met, and the code violations then get fixed and improvements are made to their properties. On the first slide here.
Excuse me just a second before, can we be respectful of the lady that's speaking, please? Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. On the first slide, you'll see the amount of rental properties in Omaha are continuing to increase, and with that, there's a great need for housing code inspectors. Since 2008, there are 9,000 more rental units in Omaha.
Excuse me again. I'm only gonna say this one more time. We're gonna be respectful of everybody in here. Bottom line. Let's start. Go ahead.
That is an increase at 14%. Next, the number of housing code inspectors has decreased from 10 to 7 in 2017, at a 30% decrease. And the next slide, you'll see in doing some of this research, we have continued to see a pattern that the city has displayed, planned a budget for a number of housing code inspectors to be hired. However, all these positions have not been filled. With all due respect and on behalf of OTAC, we ask that all these positions get filled so the city can establish a minimal health and safety standard necessary to protect and promote the welfare of tenants and also the general public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Dennis Walsh, followed by Doug Kagan.
Dennis Walsh, WALSH, 2120 Spencer Street, member of Sacred Heart Catholic Church. To conclude OTAC's presentation, the 42nd and Maple Block is not unique. Here is a map, next is a map of housing code violations within about one mile of that block, from January 15th to May of 18th. Red is for cases solved. Turquoise is open cases. A lot of complaints are unsolved. If all these complaints had been called in by council members, three of seven of your complaints would remain open. We have a big time lag problem. For 2015 complaints, two of seven remain open three years later. For 2016 complaints, three of seven remain open. For 2017 complaints, over four of seven violations remain open. Citywide, 23% of 2015 complaints remained open as of May. We find this slow response unacceptable, as really anyone would. Our complaint-based code enforcement system is broken. The result of unsolved problems is often abandonment. Here are the last two years of neighborhood activity on the abandoned and vacant property registry. Red dots represent progress off of the registry, and turquoise dots remain abandoned vacant in a problem. In the last decade, too many properties have been abandoned. The result is demolition. The last three years of neighborhood demolitions are in red. Turquoise shows the list of future demolitions. Some may call this a map of failures, but that is not really true. Our complaint-based enforcement system is designed to create situations where it is too late to truly solve the problem. The system is designed to end in demolition. This is the demolition pipeline. We call on the city to stop the demolition pipeline. As two-thirds of code violations involve rental properties, we call on the city to work with OTAC landlords, tenants, and housing experts to investigate solutions to the growing problem of deteriorating substandard rental housing. Specifically, investigate adopting a proactive rental inspection ordinance. We have met with five different landlords. Landlords should be included in the city's process and investigation, including non-MPOA landlords. Some landlords see the need to change the way we do things. We can't keep doing things the same way. La Vista went to a proactive system in 2010. Council Bluffs and Carter Lake have followed. It's not just 42nd and Maple. The city of Omaha is being left behind. You have acted on the back end, now please act on the front end. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Doug Kagan, followed by Jim Sorensen.
Doug Kagan, speaking for Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. Our organization endorses this very readable and transparent budget, particularly because of no tax increase. Since 2013, total expended revenue is less than the total available revenue to the city. The balance amount carried forward higher than since 2002, providing a financial cushion. Budget priorities rightly emphasize public safety needs and street improvements reflecting citizen concern. Bond ratings remain high. The city has less general obligation bonded indebtedness and lower per capita general obligation bonded debt since at least 2010. Investment income will greatly increase. However, we suggest several ways to cut the budget. If advocated by the council, these cuts total a sum large enough to provide a slight property, restaurant, or vehicle tax decrease. Nonprofit and other private organizations continue to ask for city tax dollars. Correctly, the mayor demands more accountability from these recipients, asking for lists of board members and banning use of city dollars for executive salaries. Although this budget ended or reduced appropriations to several non-basic private entities, it funded additional ones. These handouts take money that otherwise could fund basic city services and/or tax relief. The city budget predicates on receiving from $1 to $3 million revenue windfall from the U.S. Supreme Court decision directing states to apply sales tax to internet purchases. However, this ruling, although requiring online retailers to charge this tax, did not require states how to set the amount of tax levied. The state legislature may exempt specific businesses or purchase amounts from this tax or apply it differently to specific categories of businesses. The budget, therefore, should not count on a specific wishful estimate of new revenue from this source. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jim Sorensen, followed by Mike McGuire.
My name is Jim Sorensen. I live at 8925 North Ridge Drive. I'm a voting supervisor for the Douglas County at Florence Library. I've been there for 10 years. We have a problem out there of gerrymandering. We have about 2,500 people in District 1, 01, 02, and 03. They got Benson and Dundee, has over 60,000. I've tried before when we had a house, a car burnt in front of our house at 2:00 in the morning. I got up at 7:00 in the morning. I was pulled off at 4:00 in the morning, didn't know about it. My whole front yard is on fire. I tried for five weeks to talk to the city council, get the road closed. I cannot get the road closed. Mr. Festerson was supposed to come and talk to us. There was nine policemen out here to arrest my wife and I if we came in this council to talk to you. We tried for five weeks. On the sixth week, we came down here. Mr. Festerson left while I was talking to a police officer downstairs.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sorensen. I'm gonna stop you there because we're talking about the budget today.
Okay, the budget is?
Thank you.
We've got, North Ridge Drive is such a deplorable area. They put a ditch in front of my house that tore the bumper off my wife's car when she backed out of the driveway. There's a 96-year-old lady, Mrs. Abels, up the street, at one block up. They put a same ditch in there. You can go drive by and see how much gravel the people that bought the house, because she fell trying to get out into the street and broke her collarbone. She had a cellar house. There is about five yards of rock in that ditch that they put in front of our house. The culverts are impassable. They're filled up with debris. I spent two weeks cleaning every tree and trunk out of the street, across the street. Now up the street, I put grass seed down. It looked really nice. Now they come along, the ditch is, some places it's five feet deep. The telephone pole, the light pole across the street from me, a snowplow fell into it, and then they pulled the damn thing out backwards and bent the thing over almost to a 70-degree angle. It is still there. That's two years ago. The road grader came along and ran over a dog. They destroyed the barricade almost three weeks ago, the same time they sent them, that gal into prison for two years for killing the dogs in her car. This is getting unacceptable. What we've got going up there, the dust is so bad. They say we're Britain asphalt grindings. We're getting dirt in the street. People have to put their garden hose out to put, so they can open their windows at night. The dust is so bad. There was a car, excuse me, a truck, last Sunday.
I was gonna ask you to wrap it up, though.
Okay, Sunday, last Sunday, there was a truck being stolen and being stripped in front of my house. I yelled, went down, yelled at them. I went to get something to stop them with, and as they went up the street, it was so dusty, you could not see the red truck half a block up the street from me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Next up is Mike McGuire, followed by Keith Station.
Mike McGuire, 2402 South 13th Street, here tonight on behalf of One Omaha. I just wanted to first say thank you to the mayor and everyone involved with the budgeting process for, again, including Neighborhood Alliance support in the community services program portion of this budget. I think it goes without saying that, you know, building strong neighborhoods is a pretty vital part of building a strong city, and whatever we're talking about, from nonprofits, social services, developers, the lines of communications between residents and decision-makers, neighborhoods are kind of at the forefront of a lot of those conversations, and we're really learning a lot and, you know, progressing towards finding the best ways to support and build that kind of neighborhood community leadership. And it takes time, and it's challenging, and it looks different across the city, so we just thank you for your continued support as we kind of figure this thing out and find the best ways to make all these elements work better together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mike McGuire, followed by Keith Station, and after Keith Station is Leon Lee.
Keith Station, Director of Business Relations for Heartland Workforce Solutions, 5752 Ames Avenue, Omaha 68104. Greetings, President Gray, and members of the city council. It's a pleasure to come before you once again to share a bit of information about some of the work that Heartland Workforce Solutions is doing in the community for our two customers, both job seekers and businesses. My executive director, Erin Porterfield, was unable to be here tonight, but she sends her regrets and extends her appreciation to you all for your continued support. I'm joined by my colleague, Coraun Nieves-Cogar, and my partner, Tammy Green, with Metropolitan Community College's Workforce Innovation Division. 2019 will represent the fourth year of our work in the Career Rating is to Limit Disparities Strategic Initiative. The goal of the initiative is to take a collective impact approach to reducing poverty and unemployment in high occurrence areas throughout our community, specifically within zip codes where the disparities are the greatest. The program uses strategic intervention to address employment barriers such as transportation challenges, those that just as involved individuals face, veteran status, individuals with physical or intellectual disabilities, and youth who are neither in school or working. The goal is to connect them directly to job opportunities within high-demand industry sectors. Further, we believe that leveraging partnership opportunities with other community-based organizations, engaging industry, and thinking innovatively such as we have with the development of a career placement pipeline program is the key to making those connections. Speaking of the Career Placement Pipeline Program, since September, 56 people have obtained employment through that program. 112 workplace credentials have been earned, and retention data shows 86% of those people are still on the job. The model has proven effective and shown that we can do more together far greater than what we can achieve independently. To give you an idea, I'll reference the June 22nd, 2018 article in the Washington Post titled "Where There's a Will, Is There a Wage?" by reporter Robert Samuel, who chronicles the individual journeys of two young adult job seekers from our community. The article gives a glimpse into real challenges that are faced in our community and illustrates the coaching, training, and overall impact being made by many workforce services partners that I stand on behalf of. A few quick data points. In 2017, 875 individuals completed the National Career Rating Certificate. During the first two years of the initiative, 218 individuals were directly connected to employment through the program. To date, there are 82 businesses that have signed on to recognize the credential, 106 statewide. Four public high schools are partnering with the National Career Four public high schools are partnering with the National Career Readiness Certificate and the Career Readiness to Eliminate Disparities Initiative, including the OPS Career Center. In 2017, an average self-reported wage was $18.43 for participants. And also, an average of 58% of program participants are from the target zip codes within our initiative. In closing, I'd like to just say thank you once again for your continued support. We appreciate it, and we will look forward to sharing more information in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Next up is Leon Lee, and following him is Mary Fraser-Mints.
Leon Lee, 50th and Arbor. My one comment that I'd like to state is that I don't think it's a good idea in a public meeting to give your exact address, because then you're more or less in a race with burglars to get to your house. So I don't know if the chief of police or one of these police officers here would like to make a comment on that, but I just don't think, it's okay to give the address, but not on a public forum. I was going to also address potholes, but we don't have that much time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Fraser-Mints, and she's followed by Matt Hoopy or Hoppy? Okay.
Good evening. Thank you very much for listening to me. I'm Mary Fraser-Mints, Executive Director of Youth Emergency Services. We are at 2679 Barnum Street, Suite 205. I'm here because Youth Emergency Services provides a critical need in our community. We connect homeless and near-homeless youth to the resources that they need to be self-sufficient. We started in 1974, and we started with a, the Yes House. Some of you may have heard of the Yes House, a shelter. Then we started the Street Outreach Program in 1999, and it has grown many, many times over since that time. We started housing programs so we could provide longer-term housing for young people and get them back on their feet. At the Street Outreach Program, we served over 2,000 young people last year. We know on the national research level and the local level that mental health and substance abuse are both causes and effects of youth homelessness. So we are asking for funding for mental health therapists. Many of the youth we serve have had depression, post-traumatic stress disorder, and suicide attempts. They work hard with a mental health therapist. We have a creative way with Lutheran Family Services where they have both formal therapy, like in an office, and informal therapy, which we call table talk, because a lot of the youth have been in foster care, and so they're systematized, and they don't want to see a therapist, because they've had to see a therapist during their whole foster care. So we have this way that the therapist works with the young people. When a young person's mental health issues are helped, they are more likely to stay in school, have employment, have good family relationships, and have hope. We work with many of the partners in this room. We work with Heartland Workforce Solutions, and you hear from the WCA coming up. So thank you for your support. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Matt is next, followed by Margaret Perdue.
Thank you. My name is Matt Hoppy with the Women's Center for Advancement. Our address is 3801 Harney Street, Omaha, Nebraska 68131. Thank you to the mayor and the city council for its continuing support of the Women's Center for Advancement's Emergency 24-Hour Hotline. In 2017, the WCA provided over 28,000 services, including advocacy, case management, self-sufficiency services, legal, legal aid, and counseling to over 4,000 victims, to nearly 4,000 victims of domestic assaults, domestic abuse, sexual assault, human trafficking, and stalking. Additionally, WCA staff responded to over 7,100 emergency helpline calls. Through quarter two of 2018, the WCA has already responded to over 5,000 emergency calls. None of this would be possible without the support of the city, so thank you so much for your continued support.
Thank you. Next up is Margaret Perdue, followed by Julie Schrader.
I'm the Director of Pathways to Success at the Latino Center of the Midlands at 4821 South 24th Street. On behalf of Latino Center of the Midlands, I want to express our gratitude for supporting the Pathways to Success attendance program. The growing needs of Latino metro families has directly contributed to demands for Pathways to Success services and subsequent growth. In the 2017-2018 school year, 35% of Omaha public school students identified as Hispanic or Latino. Graduation rates among OPS Latino students were 5% below district average in 2017. Attendance is the strongest predictor of school success. Our program provides a two-generation approach to prevent truancy, and by improving attendance and family engagement, we improve academic and future economic outcomes. With support of the city, our program at South High School has exceeded district graduation rates in the past three years, with 88 to 100% of our program seniors graduating. Our impact has grown with a 71% increase in clients served since 2016. With the support of the city, these outcomes will continue to grow. This project helps to meet the needs of youth and families by increasing recruitment among Latino youth for our partnership with Step Up, and also expanding attendance programming to Norris Middle School. Middle school programming provides culturally and linguistically responsive services earlier and through the critical transition from middle to high school. We appreciate the opportunity to make an even greater impact with this valuable support and appreciate the previous support that you've given to the Latino Center of the Midlands, and thank you again.
Thank you. Next is Julie Schrader, followed by Marty Barnhart.
Hi, thank you. My name is Julie Schrader, S-H-R-A-D-E-R. I'm the founder and president of Rejuvenating Women, which is an organization that provides hope and restoration to victims and survivors of human trafficking. Is it okay if I, I can send you that address? We try to keep the address as private as we can, because it's...
If you would, please. We need it for our records.
Okay, I'd be happy to send it to you.
Thank you.
Our program, we've been recommended for a grant by the mayor, which is why we are here, and thank you for the opportunity to speak about it. The Restored Wings Program, which is the name of our home, is a therapeutic residential two-year program. We hold programming at our 5,500-square-foot home located here in Omaha. The programming includes individual trauma and addictive therapy. We do group therapy as well, life skill classes, mentorship, staff coordination, and attendance with all the medical, dental, psychiatric, and vision appointments. We also, we partner with an organization that provides equine therapy, and also we partner with a medical facility here in Omaha for free tattoo branding removal for any branding that they may have received while being trafficked. And all of the services that we offer in the home that they live in, they live here free of charge, there is, you know, later on in the program, there is an opportunity for them to work so that they can start saving 50% of their earnings, so that they can, so they have money, so they can move out with. So there's a lot that we do with the women that are in our program. It's for women 19 and up. So the fact that we've been recommended for this grant, it means, it means a great deal to us, because we can't do it without, without your, your funding. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Marty Barnhart, followed by Greg Emel.
Good evening, council members. My name is Marty Barnhart. I'm the Executive Director of the Omaha Municipal Land Bank. I want to begin my comments tonight by thanking you for your support of the Omaha Municipal Land Bank. Four years ago, you took a risk, and the risk was, do we do this experiment, call the land bank, and put it into action? The difference was, all of us had dreams about what a land bank might look like, but all of us had the same goal. Our goal was to address the distressed properties across our cities and to try to make them into a greater place, a place where they might be a benefit to our city rather than something that could be added distress to our budget and to something that might injure a neighborhood. So I begin tonight by thanking you, thanking you for your support, as us being a part of your budget. This year, we're asking for less money than we did last, and in turn, we're trusting that in the next three years, we'll be completely self-supporting for our operational budget. Not having to stand before you to thank you for that, but thank you for other items as well that you're doing. I want to say tonight also a couple of shout-outs to you as council members. If I could tonight, I'd begin with Pete Festerston. Councilman Festerman, thank you so much for your work and advocacy in the country-club neighborhood. Without your advocacy, the property at 51st and Blondo would not have been rehabbed, would not have been changed, would not have been a property that last Friday the new owner moved into, and in turn, we celebrated very, very much. As I look back on that advocacy, I say, without your tirelessness, without your phone calls and emails, I don't believe we would have continued to persevere. The property could have been torn down. So now, that worst property in a great neighborhood is now a part of a great structure. So thank you for what you did there and all the tireless work you did. Councilman Gray, I shout out to you also, and thank you that four years ago, when you and I sat down together talking about the land bank, you were skeptical. And I understood your skepticism, but you did study, you did research, you traveled into Cleveland, Ohio. You looked at their legislation and ours, and you said, this could be good. This could be something very, very good for our city. And I know today, as you sit on our board, you're seeing great things happen, and thank you for the work you're doing, the support you're giving, and the way that you're continuing to be an advocate, both publicly and behind the scenes for the Omaha Land Bank. I have with me tonight our copy of our annual report. Each of you have received this as a part of your mail, and if you haven't received it, haven't seen it, I do have a copy for you tonight. The public can access this online, omahalandbank.org, and be able to see this. Statistically, we're moving the needle and beginning to make great change in our neighborhoods. Our goal is to transform these distressed properties into community assets. Lastly, tonight, I ask you with one request. Would you consider tonight the inter-local agreement that we placed before you, that it might be signed, that we as a land bank could assist you with demolition reimbursement for up to 30 properties a year, possibly a half million dollars, and then continue to help foreclose those properties and get them changed into properties that would be indeed a community asset? If we can move those forwards with a million dollars a year spending and an additional 500,000, we could indeed see 400 properties torn down in the next four years, changing the face of neighborhoods and transforming property. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Greg Emel, followed by Ashley Farrens.
I'm Greg Emel, Executive Director at the D2 Center Directions Diploma, a nonprofit located in the Old Center Mall, 1941 South 42nd Street, Suite 503. I'm again asking the city council to follow the mayor's recommendation to help support our program. We are working with high-risk high-school-age youth, age 15 to 21. These youth are former dropouts, they're off track to graduate from high school on time, they're in the process of disengaging from high school. And so we provide a number of supports for them. The most important support that we provide is what the city is supporting us with, and that's our Youth Academic Navigator Program. We have seven youth academic navigators at the D2 Center. The city helps support one of those. These young adults with a college degree build a relationship with youth, are an academic coach, a mentor, a supporter, a connector to community resources for them. In the past year, we've worked with over 300 youth. We currently have over 200 youth in our program. Each Yan, as we call them, works with between 30 and 35 students. Already this year in 2018, we have 47 students that have graduated from high school. We're optimistic that that number is going to grow by the end of the year. So thank you for your support in the past, and please consider giving us support in the future. The economic and social well-being of our community depends on a well-educated citizenry and a high school diploma as a basic. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Next up is Ashley Farren, followed by Linda Tumi.
My name is Ashley Farrens. I am the Prevention Coordinator of Violence at Nebraska Medicine UNMC. I'm also the co-creator of the At Risk Youth Violence Prevention Program named Dusk Till Dawn. I want to thank you all tonight for recommending us again this year for funding from the mayor's office. What you provided for us last year gave us the opportunity to grow our program here in Omaha. I think that we're all very aware that violence is becoming an extreme national public health epidemic, and we are still touched by it here in Omaha. In 2011, Omaha was deemed one of the most dangerous places for a young black man to live, per capita, of a murder homicide rate of 34.4 to 100,000, as we know that 100,000 does not necessarily make up that young black population. As a member of our trauma team and Violence Prevention Coordinator at Nebraska Medicine, we feel very strongly with our program at Dusk Till Dawn to be on the preventative side of violence and not only the receiving side as a Level 1 trauma center. Dr. Charity Evans and I are grateful for the opportunity to stand here. Again, she can't be here, but that you guys would recommend funding for our program. Last year, you funded our program. We were allowed to touch 225 youth lives, ages 12 to 18, majority of them being in the 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th grade. We're hoping that our, our program, we know won't save every life, but if it saves one, that that will be something that will help our community move forward. We want to invest in our youth here in Omaha. We know that they are the future, and we know that they have choices and they have opportunities, as long as someone is out there reaching to touch their lives. And we're hoping to continue to do that. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Ashley Farren. Next is Linda Tumi. Followed by Tammy Green.
Good evening. I'm Linda Tumi, the Executive Director of the Santa Frances House, 1702 Nicholas Street. I'd like to thank the city council and the mayor for, including Santa Frances House in the 2019 budget proposal. Santa Frances House serves 3,700 individuals who are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless yearly. That's over half of how many individuals experience homelessness in the Omaha metro area, which is about 7,000. We provide low-barrier shelter care, meaning very little criteria. We take people who are on the sex offender registry, who are using alcohol and drugs, and provide services without any reimbursement from them. We also offer free drug and alcohol counseling through our miracles program and provide permanent supportive housing on our campus to 48 disabled individuals who are formerly homeless. The support of the city and the budget goes a long way. We receive a very small amount from federal funds for our budget. It costs approximately $1.3 million to operate the shelter, with just 20% or less coming from any type of government funding. So any increase that the city could make towards providing services to homeless would be welcomed. This year, when the city did its point-in-time count to count the number of homeless individuals, there was an increase from 25% to 37% of chronic homeless individuals living in shelter. So the money that we receive through the program's grant goes to providing case management and supportive services, and the data is indicating we need more of those services to move individuals out of shelter, to connect them with mental health services, with housing, and other income support, such as employment. So thank you for your support over the years through this program, and we would like to provide any other assistance that you need in continuing your funding to us.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda. Next is Tammy Green, and our last presenter is John Green.
Hi, my name is Tammy Green, 2736 North 124th Circle, and I am with Metropolitan Community College. I'm the Director of Workforce Innovation for Career Skills in our Adult Education Program. I'm here, one, being a counterpart to Mr. Keith Station, and talking about the impact that the Career Readiness to Eliminate Disparities Program and the support that you've given our community, also given the people who have gone through our program. Again, 86% of those individuals who've gone through the program are still employed. But then, I'm also here to share the story of the two individuals who were highlighted in the Washington Post article. One of those young ladies, Angelica, her answer when she got out of her first job with Airlight Plastics was, "I got hired." And the really great thing about this program is, it's not only the story of, "I got hired and I got the job," but there's also the support system in place to talk about what's next. So with an entry-level position, when you're looking at poverty, we're talking at about a $14, $15-an-hour job. What happens next in that process is where individuals are connected with short-term certification programs and degree programs, either through financial aid, the support from the city council and from the city, and also through the Nebraska Department of Education, because it takes the next step through a short-term certification, which is what happened with Isaiah. He's now in an IT cybersecurity training program, where we're now talking about his wage moving from $15 an hour at entry level to where he's now starting to be at more of a sustainable wage for his family. And that starts to change poverty in our community. That also starts to move the bar when we're talking about unemployment, and it also starts to serve the needs that we hear from businesses every single day. So again, I just wanted to say thank you very much for your support, and have a great day.
Thank you. Our last speaker, at least on record here, is John K. Green. Our last speaker, at least on record here, is John K. Green.
Mr. President, members of the council. For your information, Ms. Green is not related to me, because she would not want to be related. I'm John Green. I'm an attorney here in Omaha, and I'm here to talk to you specifically about the Police Department General Fund Air Support Unit. I sent each one of you a letter about this earlier, and when I obtained the budget for the next fiscal year, I see that in the budget is a new helicopter hangar for $1,250,000, which I found exceedingly odd, considering the fact that Mr. Edquist at the North Omaha Airport had offered to sell the existing hangar and the property around it for $350,000. And that hangar has been quite serviceable to the City of Omaha and the Air Support Unit for the last 20 years, when it was built specifically for that unit at the instance of the creation of the Air Support Unit, which has been a huge benefit for our community. Now, somewhere along the lines, in terms of renegotiating the lease, it became apparent that the Air Support Unit wanted, was going to move to Blair. Blair was going to create a new hangar for them. They were going to have to spend an additional $100,000 in improvements to the hangar in order to move in that money, which had already been spent at the existing hangar, and the rent would be more, it would be farther, it wouldn't even be in Douglas County, Nebraska. The fuel costs would be greater, the engine time loss would be greater. And then, to create a, see in here that the city is going to be purchasing land, property in Washington County for the purpose of the City of Omaha, I just thought that at three times what you could purchase the existing facility for was just beyond the pale for me, and that's why I wanted to bring this to your attention at the budget process, because this would be the appropriate time to bring this up to you.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all, those are all of the individuals that we have that have signed up. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak, just very quickly for about a minute? If not, thank you all for being here. Can we make a motion adjourned? Second roll call.
Harding. Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Palermo.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed. Meeting is adjourned at 7:22.
Thank you all for being here.